How to get closer? And then are you reading from this?
Um, I still, um, the help is coming. Yeah, so basically.
Yeah, go ahead. Talk at the microphone too. See if it's loud or not.
Hello.
There it is.
I think it is. Hello. Yeah, I think that's good. Okay. Hello. Yeah, that's better.
So this could be manipulated.
But then it's just so we can't see.
I can see. You need to like lift.
I'm listening. I'm tall enough for this, but maybe I know like.
Can you see now? Yeah. Honestly, it's better that you can't see because then you can be like, you lift me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Prior to tonight's public meeting, the board met an executive session to discuss information or strategy in connection with litigation matters or issues about which identifiable complaints may be made and information that have discussed in public would lead to the disclosure of information protected by law. Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper. Ms. Dad.
Here.
Ms. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch.
Here.
Ms. Zitch.
Here.
Eight members present, Mrs. Cooper absent.
Thank you. Dr. Reljack, could you introduce our guests?
We have some guests and they are going to speak during the superintendent's report tonight for our lens on learning.
All right, we will wait then. Next up is the Fox Chapel Council Leadership Council Student Rep, Lily McLaughlin.
My name is Lily McLaughlin and I am a junior at Fox Chapel Area High School. I was one of the 10 students to attend the Eradicate Hate Summit last fall. Attending the Eradicate Hate Summit was an incredibly powerful and eye-opening experience. The event brought together students from different schools to engage in meaningful discussions about how to combat hate and discrimination in our communities. We split into groups to discuss how we could project empathy, inclusivity, and respect in each of our schools and communities. I left the summit feeling inspired and motivated, knowing that small actions can create significant change. The organization granted each school $1,000 to use at their schools to eradicate hate. The first event we held was a ceiling tile project where each club got to design a ceiling tile and the top three got many grants for their clubs. This February, we sponsored a Black History Month door decorating competition. On March 19th, we will be hosting a multicultural night event at Fox Chapel High School to bring together students, families, and our communities. Lastly, we are planning to collaborate across the Diversity Council Clubs on a mural project. All of these projects are continuing our work to eradicate hate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Reljack, the superintendent's report.
Well, it is my pleasure to introduce Hartwood Elementary School Principal Dr. Rachel Fishbaugh and Teacher Ms. Erin Weatherill. And they are here with a group of students to talk about their experiences with their Creative Connections Capstone. And so we have students in grades three through five who are going to be sharing excerpts from their written works and discussing their experiences as young authors. I will turn it over to our Hartwood team.
Good evening. My name is Erin Weatherill. I am the gifted support teacher here at Hartwood Elementary School. This is my seventh year currently in this, in this current position and I've been with the district for 18 years. Thank you so much for having us here to share all of the good news about our most recent project. I am honored to be here tonight to present four very hardworking, very dedicated, very new and budding young authors. They excelled during our most recent Quest Capstone and they are excited to be here to share all of their hard work. Tonight, they're going to talk about how our unit encapsulated all four of Dr. Reljack's pillars of success for Fox Chapel Area School District. And they will include purpose, passion, care, and community for the Creative Connections Capstone. Without further ado, I hope you endure their, enjoy their presentation.
Hi, my name is Lizzie Modri and I'm in fifth grade here at Hartwood Elementary. I'm here to talk about the purpose of the Creative Capstones Writing Project. The purpose of this writing project was to learn the necessary steps of the writing process. We learned about the importance of editing, revising, and rewriting. Often, this was difficult. The comics in edition one, we had to rewrite and get on the right page about 7,000 times. We learned how to work with our editor, which was Mrs. Weatherill. At the beginning of the unit, we looked at some teams who had become successful authors. Jake Marsonette wrote a bestselling series, Just Jake. People are now trying to turn this move, turn these books into a movie. This, I think this set a meaningful goal and purpose for the, most of the Quest kids. Knowing the purpose of the project drove and pushed all of us in a good way. Learning the writing process could really come in handy later in life. The purpose of this writing project was very important. Now I'm going to hand this off to my writing partner.
Hi, my name is Claire Seiler and I'm also in fifth grade. I'm here to talk about how the pillar passion tied into our project. We were allowed to choose what to write, therefore letting us write what we were passionate about. Along with that, we were permitted to work alone or with partners. This gave us an opportunity to work independently or cooperatively. We were passionate, we were able to explore topics we were passionate about in a setting we were comfortable in. Passion was an important part of our project.
Hello, I am Natalie Wirt. I am in fourth grade. Once we finished creating our publication of newsletters and books, we were given the opportunity to share our articles and some of our stories with our peers in the Fox Chapel community. This allowed us to see what our classmates had created. We also had a virtual, virtual author's share presentation. Our family members were invited to watch in a class presentation through Zoom. Our classroom was transformed to a bookstore café and each of us had a chance to be a visiting author becoming, coming to read to an audience of fans. Ms. Weatherill also recorded the presentations and shared it with our families. So that, so that anyone that wasn't able to attend our bookstore presentations, they could also be in the moment. After our presentation, we took our finished projects home to share in person. All of these efforts demonstrate the care that went into creating and finishing our final, final products.
Hello, my name is Henry Silo. Hello, my name is Henry Silo and I'm in third grade. On a small scale, we formed a community within, within our own classroom. And with the older fourth and fifth grade class at Hartwood. All of the Creative Connections Capstone students in grade two, three, four, and five participated in this exciting project. We knew from the very beginning that our final books would go to Cooper Seagull Library to stocks, to stock the shell, their shelves of student work. We all came together for a common goal and that was really purposeful. Copies of our stories are also given to our school librarians so that other students and teachers at Hartwood can check out our work. This project included all four elementary schools as well as the township library to reach across the entire Fox Chapel area learning community.
At this time, we're going to distribute copies of their final publication for you to keep and just peruse. Thank you so much for listening to our presentation and thank you for, for being here tonight and for the families for bringing them here. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. That's so exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we want to thank our student authors and their educators. We also want to thank their parents for bringing them. We want to thank our Fox Leadership Council members and for all of the work that they've been doing with our Eradicate Hate work here in the district. So we're so proud to have all of you. You're all welcome to stay for the remainder of our meeting, but we certainly understand if you have other plans and we won't take that personally, but thank you all for being here too. That concludes our superintendent's report, Ms. Dad.
Thank you. I can't wait to read this. I was hoping you were going to give us a copy. Thank you all. Have a good evening and night. Mr. Jafre, is there a solicitor's report?
No report.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 13th combined meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, corrections? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It's time for our first public comment period. We do not have anyone signed up. Okay, thank you. Onto new business, facilities and transportation. Mrs. Lynch, could you read that for us, please?
I would be happy to. I'm going to move on five items. Number one, acceptance of bid and award of electrical construction contract, high school panel feeder replacement project. Accepted bid and approved the award of a contract as attached to the bidder listed below on the high school panel feeder replacement project conditioned upon the contractor completing their post-bid award documents to write Electric Incorporated for the electrical construction contract with a base bid amount of $40,000. Number two, authorization to advertise for bids, Fox Chapel Area High School's domestic water line and service replacement project or as the advertisement of bids for that project has listed. Number three, authorization of the advertisement for bids for the Fairview Elementary School Window Replacement Project. Number four, approve the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel Area School District and Kanzian Johnston and Associates LLC for architectural services related to Fairview Elementary School Window Replacement Project at a cost of $42,000. This is a new agreement. And number five, ABC Transit Incorporated's agreement, approve the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel Area School District and ABC Transit for transportation services for the period July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2030. This is a renewal of services. I move on these five items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items? I'd like to point out that items one and two are kind of things that popped up this year that we did not originally budget for. And those things happen all the time and just wanted to point that out to the community that those are extra costs for this school year.
I would just like to express a word of gratitude to ABC Transit. A lot of districts this year had massive disruptions in service, either relying on public transportation or families' own transportation. And I'm just very proud and grateful for our district administration for managing transportation so effectively and also for the continued relationship with ABC Transit.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, could you read the finance report, please?
Yes, Senator Finance. Item one, dispersments from Fund 10 in the amount of $9,188,079.13. Item two, capital service fund dispersments from Fund 31 in the amount of $70,893.73. Item three, the finance report for December 2024 is acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. Item four, budget transfers for 2024, 2025 are approved as attached. Item five, the second quarter 2024, 2025, middle school and high school student activity financial reports are acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. Item six, the authorize the advertisement of bids for the 2025, 2026 school year for the following athletic supplies, fall and winter, and athletic supplies, spring. Item seven, approve the, a motion exonerating the local tax collectors for Indiana Township, O'Hara Township, Aswell Borough, Blonox Borough, Fox Chapel Borough, and Charpsburg Borough from further collection on 2024 school district real estate duplicates and turn over to PA Dell Tax for collection the 2024 real estate tax listings certified as delinquent by the local tax collectors. Item eight, resolution 2025 dash two, fixing the compensation of certain school district real estate tax collectors. Approve the resolution as attached, fixing the compensation for certain school district real estate tax collectors beginning on January 20, January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2028. Item nine, resolution 2025 dash three, real estate tax collectors' bonds. Approve resolution 2025 dash three as attached, fixing the amounts of bonds required to have elected or appointed tax collectors in each of the municipalities for the period of January 1st, 2025 to the settlement of their respective 2028 duplicates and with regard to the collection of real estate taxes. Item 10, resolution 2025 dash four, fees and charges, collection of taxes, tax claims, and liens. Approve resolution 2025 dash four as attached, adopting fees and changes and charges in connection with the collection of taxes, tax claims, and liens. Item 11, Asset Control Solutions Incorporated Agreement. Approve the agreement as attached between Fox Chapel Area School District and Asset Control Solutions Incorporated for the management of fixed assets effective February 10, 2025 and at an annual cost of $12,700. This is a renewal of services. I move on all 11 items.
I second it. Did you hear that?
No.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
It was a whisper. I second it.
Any questions or comments on these 11 items? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Since Mrs. Cooper is not here, Ms. Finley, will you read this instruction report again?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Be moving on four items. The first will be the January 2025 graduate. The following student was eligible for mid-year graduation upon receiving final approval by the high school lead principal, Sydney Hudock. Number two, the 2025, 2026 school district calendar. And that is in the attached. Number three is PA Mental Health Education Learning Program in Schools, PA Helps Participation Agreement. Approve the partition, participation agreement as attached between Fox Chapel Area School District and PA Helps to be eligible for dispersments for the 2425 school year to support school counseling and nurse interns and authorize administrative, administration to execute the agreement on behalf of the district. This is a renewal of services. Number four is Linkit Pilot Memorandum of Understanding. Approve the Pilot Memorandum of Understanding as attached with Linkit, a data warehousing assessment analytics and MTSS RTI solution to provide a pilot of its online solution and custom printed analytics to the Fox Chapel Area School District effective February 11th, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. This is a new memorandum of understanding and there is no cost to the district nor is there an obligation to conduct business with Linkit upon termination of this project. And I make a motion to move forward on all four.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items?
I'm interested in hearing a little more about the PA Helps program.
Sure, it's a state program that provides some funding for those who are pursuing either mental health or school counseling certification. So it comes through the state, but the district is the fiduciary agent for that and, and helps to administer it.
And those interns are placed in our, in our buildings or?
They're in our buildings, working with our staff members, yes.
Okay, great. And presumably subject to all the same clearance requirements, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And the, the Linkit pilot, if you could provide a little more context on that as it relates to the new requirements from the state while we're looking at that? Sure. The Linkit pilot is purely a pilot. We're exploring other opportunities for not only data collection and benchmark assessment, but also to have an online testing suite that might mimic what students may see in the future on standardized tests. This year, the Pennsylvania Department of Education announced that all of the state and governmental tests will be conducted online next year. And that is a shift in many cases and especially for this district when we have primarily given those tests in a paper pencil format. What we don't want to do is more test prep. That's not what we do now. We instead try and embed experiences in our typical curriculum to help students to understand the formatting while we're doing the normal things that we would do in assessment. And this is a tool that has some of that potential and we'd like to explore it a little bit more with no obligation for us to continue forward if it doesn't meet our needs.
It does mention data warehousing. Is student data going to be housed within this platform?
It would be housed within this platform. That's why we have the MOU with the board. Typically, when we are piloting something that doesn't have sensitive data, we may have a different process for that, but because this has student data, we did verify with our technology department. We had multiple members of our technology team verify that their cybersecurity met or exceeded our standards as well. Thank you. Sure.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Frank, will you please read the legislation and policy report?
Excuse me, I would move to approve the following revised policies for the first reading. 005 Organization, 113.2 Behavior Support. Number 308 Employment Contract Board Resolution. Number 620 Fund Balance. 705 Facilities and Workplace Safety. 706 Property. Seven oh six, property records. Seven oh eight, lending of equipment and books. Seven oh nine, building security. Seven ten, use of facilities by staff. Seven sixteen, integrated pest management. Seven seventeen, cellular telephones. And eight twenty-three, opioid antagonist. I would also move to approve the retiring of the following policies. Seven thirteen, protection of policy. And seven fifteen, use of fax machines. The protection of policy is outdated. In its language regarding protection of district property is already addressed in other policies related to care of school property, emergency preparedness, et cetera. And seven fifteen, use of fax machines for efforts to a policy on fax machines which is no longer necessary. I moved them both.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these policies?
I just, I just want to surface that for the fund balance that that policy is retaining our existing fund balance band of five to eight percent for unassigned funds, correct? That is not it. That is not a substantive change. Yep, great.
I'd just like to remind the community, we have a governance committee that meets almost every month. And we discuss these policies there and decide which ones will move forward to the full board. Mr. Frank is the chair. Ms. Finley is also on the committee, as well as myself. And then we bring them to the full board. And board members can then, if they have further questions or would like to see changes to any of these policies, we can discuss them further here as well. Okay, nothing else. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Zitch, will you please read the personnel report?
Yes, I'll be moving on the following items. Item one, resignation a professional. The resignation of Stephanie A. Ebriadis, educational support teacher at Kerr Elementary School under the retirement plan as outlined in the 2023-2028 Fox Chapel Educators Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Resignation of Dave F. Batista, physical education teacher at Fox Chapel area high school under that PRI. The resignation of Lisa M. Bellinotti, elementary teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. Resignation of Marla B., excuse me, Marla B. Brashear, elementary teacher at Fairview Elementary School under the retirement plan. Resignation of Regina Cornet, elementary teacher at Kerr Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Nedeg A. Flint, French teacher at Fox Chapel area high school due to personal reasons. The resignation of Heather Flynn, educational support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Catherine, Catherine A. Frederick, elementary teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Todd E. Masick, physical education teacher at Fox Chapel area high school under the retirement plan. The resignation of Jody L. Travaglia, physical education teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. The resignation of Therese K. Wilk, reading support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. And the resignation of Amy J. Zatola, elementary teacher at Hartwood Elementary School under the retirement plan. Item B, educational support. The resignation of Jennifer L. Schwartz, business accounts, office accounts payable purchasing secretary at the Fox Chapel area school district due to personal reasons. Under C, supplemental contract athletic. The resignation of Matt Sasson, football high school fourth assistant due to personal reasons. Extra innings, the resignation of Samantha R. Rin, substitute teacher at Kerr Elementary School for the Fox Chapel area school district extra innings program due to personal reasons. Item two, appointments. A, educational support. Courtney L. Kush is approved as the 12-month receptionist district office secretary for the Fox Chapel area school district effective February 11th. Supplemental contracts athletic. The following athletic supplemental contract is ratified for Brendan Urso, intramural's middle school activity sponsor 11, and bigger, faster, stronger leave replacement. The following athletic supplemental contracts for Reed Bersick, baseball middle school head, and Nicholas Luciano, baseball high school second assistant. C, supplemental contracts non-athletic for Catherine Gilner, mentor teacher Dorseyville Middle School, Emily G. Kwakawski, class sponsor seventh grade, leave replacement, and Therese Wilk, mentor teacher Hartwood Elementary School. Item three, leave a professional. Heather Flynn, educational support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School is ratified for a medical sabbatical. For leave replacements professional, Alexandria LuKurt Howell is ratified as leave replacement educational support teacher at Hartwood Elementary School, available due to the medical sabbatical of Heather Flynn. For also Brigitte S. Patrick is ratified as a second semester leave replacement computer science teacher at Dorseyville Middle School, available due to the medical sabbatical of Sezen Giklioti. Kayla Weiss is ratified as leave replacement elementary teacher at O'Hara Elementary School. This position is available due to the childbearing leave of Samantha Diamond. For five, homebound instruction, a teacher. Marla Brashear is ratified as a homebound instruction teacher for the 2425 school year. Extra inning substitute teachers. The following individuals are ratified as extra inning substitute teachers at Kerr Elementary School, Christina K. Thompson and Katie A. Wiegand. For seven, volunteer athletic. The following athletic volunteer is approved for Donald Schubert, baseball high school. All of the effective dates and salaries and relevant contracts are as indicated here in the agenda and given on these seven items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items?
I would just like to open by saying that the list of individuals who are retiring out of our district is a list of truly exceptional people. And we thank them for their service.
Well, and as individuals whose our region is the Hartwood area, I think to not acknowledge that six teachers on this list are all from Hartwood this year and to thank them deeply for their commitment to our kids and to the district in particular as we sit here in their gym is of importance as well.
That, excuse me, that list is, it features many, many outstanding educators with hundreds of years of service combined to the district.
Any other comments? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Good, will you please read the operations and cooperative services report?
Yes, I have two items to move on. The first is the Precision Copy Products Incorporated Agreement to approve the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and Precision Copy Products Incorporated for equipment leasing and print management services effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2030 at an annual cost of $329,400. This is a new agreement. Number two, with Innovative Service Technology Management Services Incorporated, approve the agreement as attached between the Fox Chapel area school district and Innovative Service Technology Management Services Incorporated for the district copy center services effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2030 at an annual cost of $191,172. This is a new agreement, but a continuation of services. I move on these two items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items? We talked a little bit about these last week. Are there any other questions? No? Okay, Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Lynch.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It's time for our second public comment period. Nobody has signed up. Okay. Fox Chapel Educators Association. Anybody here for them?
Good evening. I was not planning to speak. As past president, I was just subbing in for Kristen and Jeremy this evening. But likewise, with many of you commenting on the upcoming resignations due to retirement plan from the contract, I too want to just acknowledge just all of the dedication of these many, you know, professionals that have given their entire career to Fox Chapel area school district and to our students, who really are, are almost like our children. And want to again thank the board, Dr. McCollums and Dr. Raljack for the contract that we were able to execute with you all. And hopefully, we're able to find a lot of great educators to take the place of these teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is time for board comments. Mr. Frank.
I'd like to thank Hartwood for their welcome today and the presentation by the students. It was excellent. And I was going to comment that Rachel and Erin represented FCA so well tonight. It's great to see familiar faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Finley.
A couple things. Please make sure to get your flu shots. It's going around. Schools are closing. Just be aware of that. Antibacterial all the time. Black History Month. We're in the midst of it. I hope everyone is learning something new this month. And then I heard from Mrs. Macken about Care Solace, and they have social workers now to help you in the process of taking care of your needs. So please do reach out. There's a, there's a new step which will help take care of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Lynch.
Just a special thank you to Dr. Fishbaugh for opening up Hartwood to us tonight and coming out and joining us as always. A lot of fun to be back in the Hartwood school building.
Thank you. Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone the academic committee meets tomorrow. Since Mrs. Cooper's not here, she can't do her, her plug like she usually does. But it's always a good time, and we invite the public to come and learn all about what's happening in the instructional side of things.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton.
Well, Dr. Hasselcorn beat me to it, so no comment.
It is that great.
I was also going to plug it too, so yes. Ms. Zitch.
Yep, I just wanted to express again a big congratulations to our outstanding library. I know that they've been recognized a few times now, but it's still really stupendous. And it was nice to sort of share some space at the high school this week for the high school open house, which in addition to some of the finances that we approved tonight was a true testament to the student activities we have at our high school. Truly mind-blowing offerings that rival what many small colleges and major universities offer. Like, there's just so many things that our students are doing. If you want a fun laundry list, I recommend the attachments. But no, that's it. And there's a blood drive this week. I believe our community blood drive is happening this week. I hope to make it by.
Wednesday, did you say?
Yes, Wednesday. Yes, yes. Come one, come all. Wednesday, if you'd like to, that's right. It should be a good time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Good.
I just want to give some recognition to our cheer team who is at Nationals right now. They had a strong showing yesterday, and they'll be home tomorrow.
Great, thank you. And I would like to thank those lovely students again who presented. I'm looking forward to reading what they've written.